Brother Sleckman will join us in a minute, so it is after seven, so we'll get started. And we'll open it up. We wanted to start. Brian, do you want to start?
Well, I heard you have some changes, so why don't... I'll let you guys go first.
Okay. Um, I wanted to ask first on... Tom? Page six, do you want to start a couple of things here? On page six, under property rentals. I was wondering if we could increase that maybe five or six thousand under, um, from three twenty to maybe three twenty-five?
Yeah.
Would be all right.
Yep. You have six for there.
Is six okay, do you think, Tom? Do we go for six? Check it out, what do you think?
I prefer five, but six is, if you want it.
Six. All right, well, let's start with five, okay? We'll see what we come up with. On the property rentals. Another five thousand. Well, we've got to start somewhere. Do you have anything else on that page?
Private fees?
Recording fees?
Recording, please, Tom. But maybe we have another five there.
I didn't, I, I went to page six, I didn't print this up yet. We can go back to that.
The issue that I see with recording fees is currently we're at thirty-two thousand dollars collected. Uh, we have a few months left in the year, but we have about forty, about thirty-six percent of that budget left, um, to collect this year. So where it looked like we were going up in the past on that, it seems like we're not as, um, going as high there as we were. I mean, you could go there if you'd want, but I don't know if you're going to necessarily get that number.
No, no. What about the private duty on the fees?
Well, that's kind of a up and down related to expenditures. And, um, the expenditures, um, already, I think, are lower than that number. Um, so I built in some amount of a change decrease on that number. And again, it's one of those ones where we have an expense and a revenue and expense. So you're, the expense on that is one forty-eight right now listed, and I think I put the revenue at one fifty-five. So where in the past, I think we did, you know, even where... It was only about an eight percent markup, I think, right, admin fee?
How about five mark? Can it take five anyway, right? One fifty-five to sixty?
I don't know, Tom, I think that's okay.
Five thousand?
Okay.
Tom, on the gun permits, in, um, two thousand twelve and thirteen, we were at forty-six ninety. For some reason, last year, we dropped it to three thousand. Is that because of the change in the law? I would have thought it would have gone up. Didn't you get a flurry of, of applicants?
Actually, that law did retain, um, the number I'm thinking of. If the law was changing, people would run and get it.
Right. That was, the fiscal year twelve, we had three thousand, uh, then in thirteen, we had forty-six hundred. So this year, I've, um, I have estimated forty-five hundred there. And, uh, you know, possibly, you probably s- you could go up to five hundred there.
Another five hundred?
You could go five hundred to five thousand there.
Tom, is it okay if we go back to the revenues on five? Sorry, I kind of...
Sure. You can go wherever you need, want to go.
Okay. Under property taxes for prior years. I know we've had a lot the last few years with the different sales and all, but do you think we could increase from two forty, maybe two seventy-five, somewhere two seventy, two seventy-five back there? What is it so far this, yeah, but, you know, we did have all the, the bigger sales, I think, already. What do you think?
I think that as we do tax sales over and over, you know, the, the global receivable goes down. So that's something to be cognizant of. This fiscal year, we didn't really do a tax sale. I think you probably could go, you know, I probably could estimate up on, um, oh eleven of two seventy-five. And then with that being said, uh, probably could go up to the hundred and seventy-five thousand mark on the next line item. If, if we, you know, but that's probably, there would be an expected tax sale.
Okay. So that would be... In oh eleven, that line item would be an additional thirty-five thousand, and then oh twelve would be eighty-five hundred. And then, under investment income, I know last week, Susan and I had to go, the bank was in here meeting with you and, um, your people. So do you think we could put a little bit more? Or did you get a better rate at the bank?
Yeah, we had, uh, we recently opened up a, uh, an account, um, uh, with a, uh, Rockville Bank actually is the bank, and they were offering a higher interest rate. So, uh, we can, you know, try, if, if the rates hold true and revenue holds true, uh, we can, uh, try to go to thirty thousand. So that would be an increase in about five thousand.
So on that page, it's forty-eight thousand.
Addition.
Additional.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
A little more on the current property taxes?
It's fifty-nine thousand.
Current property taxes will change with the changes in these, these changes.
When we're all calculating.
Tom, on page seven.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous. I don't know what's in miscellaneous, but we've gone in two thousand eleven and twelve from almost a quarter of a million dollars to ten percent of that, down to fifteen thousand. Do you know what the history is with those? If there's anything in there that we can add back?
Well, the, what's, what's been in there, there's been some, one, uh, in twelve, the main money on that was the, uh, money for the roofs, uh, repair at my school. And then also, Kirma provides a dividend. Kirma provided a dividend, um, in twelve, uh, in twelve and thirteen, around that twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five thousand number. Budgeted fifteen, but it's, it's a possibility that we might not get that at all this year.
The board told me last week that likely not. They've experienced, um, a lot of losses this year, and they're, while they're not expected to have any deficit, they're not expected to have much of a service.
So if anything there, I would reduce that to either five or ten thousand dollars.
How about on the planning and zoning hearings? Now, they were ten thousand nine hundred, almost eleven thousand. And then we dropped that this past year. Is there any money there that we might be able to add in? Thousand or...
Probably with, uh, not moving on a decrease on miscellaneous, I would say no, there is no money there.
All right, someone mark that page.
Um, throughout the, um, budget, going to the expense side, um, there are some, some accounts that there are, uh, increases in energy for things like electricity, um, and then heat went down on most accounts, but, I mean...
It's been about a seven and a half percent increase in electricity. Uh, throughout the budget, as, as electricity costs seem to continue to rise. The, um, you see, where fuel costs are lower, it's generally where we've switched to natural gas. So made a concerted effort to lower the estimates in those. There's still areas where, there's still, some of those areas still have either propane or oil as a component. Like, see, the fire department still has some oil or propane components to them. So those are the, those are the types of fluctuations you see in the, in the oil. The, the areas that I did notice where there was, uh, a few, um, overages, um, that I'd had in addressed was in the animal control budget and in the, um, park and rec budget that I just had kind of, you know, as I was going through, I forgot to adjust those downward. So there's a few adjustments that could be made in those.
I think resource recovery too had no change in electricity.
Resource recovery is, is, uh, oh, going up or down?
It just didn't change on one twenty-eight from the prior year where everything else typically, like fire went up eleven percent, police went up nineteen point six. There was no change, I just, that caught my eye. Is that two thousand?
Yeah, I mean, there could have been a slight increase there. I think I was trying to keep that budget as tight as it could with the already increased transfer there. That probably is off, it's probably going to be above, we're probably going the whole on that. I guess I was kind of hoping that somewhere we'd get in between that sixteen and nineteen, but it may not be with some of the changes that have made, that occurred. So to your point, there could possibly be an increase there, that's your guys' call.
Same with parks and rec, I think you mentioned that, there's no change on one thirty-three. Electricity, is that nineteen thousand?
But electricity there is, I think you got enough because we've always been spending between sixteen and fifteen. So I think that was no change because...
Because it was raised last year.
It was, it's, it's, it's higher, and then, and we're kind of ho- it's higher there because if you do these, if you get the Brownstone, um, park grant that you're trying to get approved there, where you have bathrooms and stuff like that, there was that estimate in there of trying to say, hey, is, maybe there's an extra four thousand there in that number, um, with, with, with moving that forward. But where I, where in the parks, um, in rec that I had put a little too much in was in the heating fuel. I think you might be able to drop it down there to, um, um, maybe an, uh, an eight hundred dollar number there, because that's going to be, uh, natural gas now. So we were at nine ninety-three with oil, so, you know, hoping that we can get, get a savings there on that one. So that would be, uh, line sixty, that's account sixty-two oh oh four. And, and then also in parks and recs, and one of the other things I did notice was the revenues on that one. I, I, uh, on, uh, summer playground, might have been a little low on that one. So that was a two thousand dollar effect. So that would be, that's actually a twenty-six hundred dollar effect to your general fund. So that would be kind of with your transfer. So that's kind of, I think that's, uh, the heating kind of issue. I know that was one of the ones that I had noted that kind of would hopefully get, get you back some to lower, um, that would lower your, uh, on page, uh, one oh seven, that would lower your transfer out to the park and rec by twenty-six hundred dollars to account, to a number of one eight seven two two nine.
Do you think they can hit those revenue numbers? I mean, haven't we transferred in, like, every year?
Yeah, but in this one, we actually hit within reason, I didn't go way up. I did, we were at eighty-six and eighty-four, and I just brought it up to eighty-two.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's this year not done, right?
Yeah, this year's not done, right?
Okay. So, I mean, as long as you think that, that's, you know, that we can do it.
I'm, I'm hoping that, that one we can do. Because it seems like we were...
I just hate those mid-year transfers, that's all.
Right. But I did, we, we increased this transfer too for this year.
I saw that, yeah.
So we did go up there, so I was just, it was one of those ones where, I knew Kathy had brought up about the fuel in this budget, so I, I wanted to, you know, look at that. And then when I was looking at that, I was just, I, you know, I knew you guys were looking for other areas, and I said, oh geez, maybe I did make a, maybe I underestimated that just a little bit, so.
Where I started to go, Tom, with that was, um, if we were to call the energy, I mean, I know by definition they're not fixed cost, but if we were to call it a cost, an uncontrollable cost, whatever, um, and we left those in place throughout the budget. But we did not allow any other increases except where they're, where we're obligated through contractual agreement, like salaries, wages, and, um, where we contract services, uh, like, well, I don't, I don't think probate went up, but we do like probate or, or the health district or emergency dispatch. And we eliminated the other increases. Is there anything that jumps out in your mind that would not work with that plan?
Question? You mean electricity you got in that?
No, no, I'm, electricity, we can't control.
Right. So what do you say?
So I'm not counting that. I'm not counting our contractual obligations like wages and pensions and...
So you're saying supplies?
Supplies, additional, um, additional compens, uh, things like the, for lack of a better example, conferences, meetings and dues where that's increased. If we've, um, added people where there weren't people before, or added hours if they're part-time, if we kept those constant, would that, would that be problematic in the operation of the town? I just think, you know, where I'm coming from is that the taxpayers can't afford any more than is absolutely necessary. So unless we have the service that's absolutely necessary that we increase, then I don't think we should. I don't want to, I don't want to abandon something that we absolutely need, but if it's not absolutely necessary, I don't want to do it. Let's see if I can find examples.
There aren't too many, I don't think, that did increase.
There are, but, well, the first one's page twenty-seven, elections, um...
So that was on my list too.
Election worker stipends, all of a sudden, were, were going up. Has the rate increased, or do we need more people, we need more hours?
Um, there's a state election, a left-wing vote, and then there's also primary.
We had that last year.
Now, if you cut that, all right, let me make this state, sort of, uh, affects Republicans and Democrats. You pay for three people every time you have an election. You pay for the official person who lines, and then you pay for two other people. You're not required to have those two other. It's what you, you put in the budget, and it's what's happened for the last probably seven or eight decades.
Who decides the payment for each individual?
It's your payment.
Who said, that's our payment plan? Okay.
But if you really want to adjust the number, cut the number of people.
The people, you couldn't adjust?
That means...
I feel like that the pay is high.
Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I do, I just...
Do you have the payment plan with you? I don't think they get much more than minimum wage.
But most workers, most workers get minimum wage.
I think the poll workers get minimum wage.
Oh, really?
There's a couple of the higher level people get it to like eleven or twelve, but it's based on...
But if you really want to impact, it's numbers and people.
I just remember hearing a story of what a great deal it was working at the election or something, so that might be something.
Well, what you're talking about probably is someone that sets up, which is now.
Okay.
And then people that are the moderators. Do you think the moderators get five hundred dollars?
Yes, I think that's what I was...
Yes.
Yeah, for one day's work, five hundred dollars sounds pretty good, but you can't adjust that at all.
Well, if you want to, if you want to adjust it, you need to do it.
Yeah.
Because I'm not going to do that.
You have to be qualified to be a moderator, right?
Okay. I just, yeah.
Yeah, you have to go to school for a little bit for that too. It's not like you just...
But in terms of those dollars, Mark, if you, if you said you were only funding one person, and you go to the table and have your name on it, and do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do. What about the supplies? It's up a thousand dollars.
Isn't that for the, that's for the ballots?
I mean, I guess from my standpoint, I mean, I guess I understand what you're saying, but I mean, to me, it's, it's hard. I mean, I spent many hours, many, many, many hours working on this budget, going line by line, item by item, reviewing expenditures, and you know, sometimes I miss a few here and there. But it's like, to come back and be like, oh, let's move it back to some number and then go back and say whatever, it just, it's, it's troubling to me. It's, I mean, I went down to actual saying, okay, it looks like they're going over budget this year, so we need to change that. And, and this is occurring, so I need to update that. So, I mean, that actually transpired. I mean, it could be a whole lot different budget system if I just took a budget and said, okay, throw a two percent, or throw a one percent on. I mean, that's just going to Excel, pop numbers in.
I understand that it's troubling to you, Tom, but it's our job. That's what we're elected to do here.
I get that, but I mean, we're going to...
And you have to look at history and compare it, and you don't like to give us current numbers. We've asked for those in the, in the past to be put into this document, but you don't want to do that.
And we're here.
The point is, we're just asking questions, and if we can't ask you the questions, then we might as well go home and just let you adopt the budget you want, so...
Well, my point is, on this page, for an example, as you're saying, Mark, if you want to make a change in the way you run your elections, you could reduce the budget. And the other, and this is really in terms of registrers, we've had a discussion in some towns of, of that funding.
All right, so we'll leave that. I mean, that is just an example, but...
But if...
Let me also say, Tom, that because somebody is going over budget, the answer may or may not be to increase the budget. The answer may be, there should be more control, and we don't know that, because we're not involved today.
Well, let me say something, and I can interject. If we do not go over what we're told to spend, in some accounts, there may be overages, but there's under in other moments. We have not, in terms of the bottom line, conceded budgets. But if this board decides that they want to reduce the budget, then I will administer it. And that means the departments just won't have the money, period. So if that's what the board decides, we will abide by what you said. What you have in front of you is as the programs work now. Now, there are some increases, um, there's a person in land use that has more hours as secretary, and that was increased because we're anticipating more dollars. That's one example.
Could I ask, um, how much more are we, how many more hours are we adding to the benefit person?
The benefit person is currently working thirty hours, and, uh, they were, uh, previously in this year, working nineteen.
So they've already been increased?
Correct.
Eleven hours a week?
No, it's already been done. We were asked, it was just done.
Well...
It exists now. Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
But there's a position in planning that has not changed, and that's in there, that can, you know, what you want to do.
No, I'm talking about the finance department where there's an increase in the part-time payrolls due to the, um, changes in the benefit laws. But that's already happened, so we're not being asked, we're being told.
You can eliminate it.
How did you get there in the first place?
I increased the hours because I felt I needed to.
What were the changes that, that we had to add to those hours? What were the changes in the benefit law?
There are numerous rule changes recently, we're giving, uh, having more and more people being awarded, and a lot of people are asking for assistance in the, uh, with the new changes with some of the laws that are going out there. There's been more hours required. The person that does work there works across the town and the board. The, the money is just paid by the town's budget. It's charged back through an in-kind transaction, uh, for the EDO one. But it's just, there's a lot of, uh, work with the, uh, paperwork that needs to go out to various employees about rule changes and open enrollments and, um, and just a lot of correspondence that they've, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
I thought most of these changes weren't, weren't, didn't take effect yet.
I think that's the only one. And I, I'll tell you, when I feel that we need to have better coverage because we can't afford to be making, um, inappropriate assignments of insurance, and I have to make sure things are done well, that's why that decision is taken. and I have to make sure things are done well, that's why that decision is taken. Now, if this board, as I said a few minutes ago, if you decide to reduce the budget, we will abide by whatever you tell us. So if you have areas you wanna reduce the budget, we will eliminate whatever needs to be eliminated.
Can we just go back to the elections? I just, do we need the fifteen hundred for voter, the voter canvassing? We spent three fifty in eleven to twelve, and then three twenty-one in twelve to thirteen. Why is it two thousand last year and then fifteen hundred this year? Can we lower that, you think?
Yeah, that was a, uh, that was a type of, uh, system where it used to be more heavily driven toward a dollar value type, and, um, the registrars that were here, um, that were doing it, uh, they had gotten the fees down on that, which were nice. So I had assumed, uh, that, uh, yeah, I mean, I think you might, I, you probably could drop that some.
We drop it to a thousand, or...
Yeah, I think that's very, very doable.
Registrars?
Yeah, I think that's a very doable number.
Yep, ju- just generally, when you're done, I get a comment.
And for example, if within the part-time payroll you wanna reduce that, we will instruct the elections folks that that's all they got to spend. And we can't use the three people at every table. But that's what you need to tell me. I am not gonna start cutting along.
What is that additional people during heightened hours, you know, like, you know, kinda comes down?
That's not, that's not the point. The point is, you have three people at every one of those tables. You only are required to have one, by law.
So we have three people?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I got a couple of thoughts on that.
Yeah, that's been going on for eighty years or more. I, I don't know how many years. I mean, that's always been the case. And then they take those sheets, and they bring them to the Republican headquarters, and then they take the sheets and they bring them to the Democratic.
You get the bad news, you get the good news.
You get the good, I had a couple of, threw it through and now, just an observation. I don't think it's a, you know, that, that's not a big department in money, but I do know that, you know, so I, I'm not that troubled. I can see it raining, and if we have one person at a table and people are outside in the rain, we're all gonna hear a lot of screaming and justify it, we saw.
I don't think so.
That's not...
They're duplicating, they're duplicating what one person does, right?
No, not, not necessarily.
I think, I think so.
I think...
Yes, yes.
You go in there and say...
Alright, yeah, you're right.
Everybody has a chat box.
Alright, I see what you're saying, yeah. Uh, the other part of it, I, uh, if you wanna do that, I suppose you can, uh, you know, I think you probably hear something from some people about it.
Oh, yeah.
But the other issue is, is the issue of the state mandates on that department. They, they, they have come out with, uh, different mandates regarding what they have to do. They have an audit, you're gonna have to have people there for that. So basically, overall, I don't think that department is a big expenditure. It's worth spending our time trying to reduce it. That's just my, my take on it. If you wanna do something with the checkers, I suppose you can, but I don't know what that saves.
Page seventy-seven.
Suppose somebody's out, and you have, uh, you have one check, you have ten people, and, uh, that day, two people don't come, and you have eight, then what do you do? There's all kinds of scenarios that you, you have to think out when you do something like that. But if somebody's gonna make a motion, I suppose they can. Go from there.
Well, if you're looking for redundancy, then, then you should have two. I mean, for three seems a little excessive for me. Not that it's a lot of money, but, right?
Well, then, do we get hired, kind of a Republican or a Democrat? You, the, the way many towns run...
If I understand what you're talking about, you have, you have, if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, you have three women sitting at a table.
Sometimes, man.
One hand, yep, that's three people.
Three people.
And, uh, I go in there and say flood, and three people cross my name off the list, right?
That's right.
Then what happens?
This is the official person.
The first person?
Yes.
Okay.
This is someone from the Republican Party, and this is someone from the Democratic. These lists are not official. This list at ten o'clock, at two o'clock, at four o'clock, they bring them over to the Republican headquarters, and they bring them to the Democratic headquarters. This is the only official checking. Now, that person maybe works four hours, and then they switch another person to another. But you're paying for three people, and as I said, that's been the case forever. I don't know that you wanna change that.
But you could limit the number of tables, right? Cause there's a lot of tables.
That's when you're gonna get the backup.
Then you get the backup, okay.
I mean, I think that our elections have gone very smoothly. We had one, I think it was two thousand eight, we had a lot of trouble.
The amount of money, the question is not...
I don't think I was gonna agree with Mark.
Did you wanna go to seven, or was that what you said?
Yeah.
On election supplies, you said you wanna go to seven? Is that what you said?
I don't, I didn't say anything about election supplies. If somebody wants to go to seven, um, I'm in favor of it.
What page are we now?
Thirty, twenty-seventh, sir.
So, yeah, if we, if we dropped it to seven, we would be down a thousand total to thirty-six-nine.
Cause that prior year was, I think, a presidential, so the, the reason why the voting machines went up is that was a state contract change. Where they make you pay the, the maintenance now.
Okay.
So that was why that's, you know, stays where it is.
Well, to Mark's point, the conference meetings and dues went up to nine hundred instead of leaving it at the five hundred.
Okay, that, that was, there was more members that were working there now, and, uh, I don't know, when there was a retirement by, or one of the people left. So they had the registrar and the deputy were both being trained, and then the helpers to the deputies both were being trained. So it seemed like there was, uh, they were trying to cross-train multiple people. So that was the reason why that occurred. Would you like that to go back down to five hundred?
But I think for the supplies, that concerns me because you have to buy what you have to buy, and...
Yeah, you're getting into supplies.
You can't go to all of the deep, Paul, right?
Yeah, you've got supplies, you're gonna have such, where towns have done this where they haven't, they have to order a certain type of ballot. That's, and that's in the supplies. And there've been cases where towns have run out of those ballots during the election because they underestimated how, how many they needed. The point being, there's special ballots that they have to buy. You just don't go down to make copies down at the corner. It's really for, I, I think for, for what we're saving in this department, at least, it's probably gonna, it has the potential to create more problems than it's worth. Well, I, I just might take that. It's not like we're saving, you know, twenty thousand bucks or anything.
Yes. Kinda spoken next, uh, Mr. Reddick.
What, the changes on this would be a thousand dollars now in fourteen oh oh six voter canvassing. Thirty-two thousand, conferences, meetings and dues will now be five hundred, and those are the only changes.
Does everybody agree to that, because I don't know?
I don't agree with you, I, I...
I'll take a turn.
I was hoping for a thousand, but I'll settle for nine hundred.
So, to reiterate, is voter canvassing going to a thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, and is, you're not changing that?
Conference has changed, and the other, the supplies are...
Kathy's saying, let it go, because nobody else seems to...
What do you mean, let it go?
Let it go at nine hundred for conferences, meetings and...
Oh, let it go? So stay it?
I thought, that's what I said.
Oh, I thought we were dropping it to five.
Did anybody agree with me?
Oh, no, I thought, so we're only gonna drop it five hundred, then?
Yes.
Okay. No, I get it.
Well, I'm sorry, voter canvassing is what we were just talking about.
Went to a thousand, right?
Let's go to canvassing.
They contact the voters to make sure they still live there, that they're still going to be voting, and so forth. They canvass to make sure that the lists have the correct names and the addresses.
How much canvassing did we do last year, just out of curiosity, on the budget from the last election? Like, did we canvass at all?
I'm sorry, I'm not really a registrar, but I know there was a canvassing occurs every year, yeah.
Well, they send those little cards out some years.
So, hold on a minute, so that the information's correct.
It's fourteen oh six.
Well, what is that called? So where's that number coming from? Is that an accurate number?
Yeah, I think you could go down to the one thousand, probably it'd be okay, definitely. It's hard, this is the third year they're going with that, that, uh, there's a, there was a change in the system where they're able to use like a database. And now, instead of the payrolls, not as much, they, I think the data, it's in election supplies is where the database amounts come from. So we pay it out of there, and then, uh, they, they spend some time reviewing that database activity. This year will be interesting because I know there was more people working on it. But, you know, they're working on the canvassing now, so you don't really know what the totals are until they get through working on it.
So for part-time payroll in the finance department, there were a lot of changes, the numbers went out. Is that going back to the way it was now, do you think? Or is the same amount of need and question still wanting to arise?
Well, I believe there is a need for that position. And I believe that it's an important position to have. I, would I like to have the Board of Education pay their part of it? Yes, but they don't. But I still believe that that position is important for the integrity of benefits, and also to help my office with some of the human resource items that need to be done. The non-union position, it's thirty-hour week, and I believe that it's invaluable to trying to keep the human resource area well maintained and taken care of for not only the general town government, but she covers all of the Board of Education employees in terms of their healthcare benefits, short-term disability, long-term disability, and other benefits.
Why don't they cover that portion of it?
Because the town has always paid for the issue.
Think we could like change that next year, maybe?
We can ask, we can ask. I just, I believe that that's an important position.
There's also, I, I, the person's a direct report to me.
Okay.
And Susan, you know what I mean, so it's kinda...
Yeah, okay.
I mean, ideally, I think it should come out of that. I think that they should contribute, but they don't. So, I just believe it's important to...
It's all coming from the same place, and, you know...
I'm up to page forty-seven, I don't know if anybody has anything to do with that.
Um, I have something on forty-three. Just, um, just wondering about the licensing software. Um, I'm sure it's something, but do you happen to know why the jump from, uh, twenty twelve to twenty thirteen? The ten, uh, five, three, two to twenty-five?
It's budget, it's budgeted about twenty thousand five hundred, and it's based, it's, it's, it's what licenses are spent in the year, and, um, and some things come up on odd years. And last year, he had had some other expenditures in other areas. So I think he held off on some licensing purchases that were, that would have been there. We've done some computer upgrading this year, so we'll have some definite licensing purchases, uh, this year. So it's one of those ones, it's like a fluctuating number, uh, between the two. You probably could definitely get, you know, if you, if you bring it to the twenty thousand five hundred, that would definitely be fine, I know that.
You could lower it.
Yeah.
Would everybody be okay with taking five hundred?
Yes.
The other one on that, the other one on that one, I think there could be, I mean, I, at the time, we were working back and forth with the phone system, the telecommunications line item. I think we probably could try to put that at the thirty-five hundred because we just put in a system, so hopefully it'll either lower the cost or mean to keep it flat. So that would be, you know, I think that would be an area that we could definitely, um...
I think that would be under warranty still, too, right?
Yeah, hopefully we get some stuff under warranty. There's still some stuff with the high school that we help support that system as well that might not be, you know, that we'd have to cover some, too.
Okay, cool. So that's a thousand, then, right?
Uh, that would, yeah, between the two, yeah, yeah.
That's good, I mean, good. So, what's the summary on this page?
On three one oh eight, it go, the number goes to twenty thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
And on, uh, three six oh oh four, the number goes to thirty-five hundred.
Page twenty-one?
It's on forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Fire marshal.
Yep.
I propose that the, uh, part-time payroll be increased three percent, which would be thirty-eight thousand four hundred, which would be a reduction of forty-three hundred dollars. I think a four, fourteen and a half percent increase is not affordable in this town.
You're on eleven oh three, Mark?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then we abide by that.
I don't know if anybody else agrees on that.
Yeah, and then the dues, could we keep that the same on that page, too? Based on what we discussed earlier?
There were numerous requests out of this department, many of which were cut, um, and this is another request that...
But I bet you, I mean, I have a mask, but there are four department managers here, and I'll bet you they would all like more in that budget, too. And, um, we just can only afford what we can afford.
You're, you're...
I don't know if, if the others would agree.
Well, let's get consensus.
No, I, you know, when you say three percent like that, that's, that's fair. I mean, and, and it does send a message, you know? I don't, I wouldn't like giving a fourteen percent to one area, and then, you know, another area remaining flat, you know? That's kinda what it is right now.
I'm sure you could use more help. I'm sure everybody in this room could use more help.
Alright, so we got consensus. Carl?
Fine.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Next.
Well, Kathy also suggested reducing thirty-two thousand to a thousand from twelve hundred. And what about uniforms to five hundred from seven hundred? I think that brings the total department increase to still over three percent, but not a lot over. Emergency dispatch, we don't have anything to say about that, do we? Should they tell us what they're gonna do?
Correct.
The only thing that's in here...
Is the, yeah, there's, so what's in this number is about a hundred and four thousand for the emergency dispatch services, and then there's eleven thousand, um, for a service contract to, versus, for the fire support to read your alarms.
Which...
And that has not been implemented yet, but has been, um, was negotiated last year, and we were waiting to get the phone systems implemented, and then it was whether, you know, when to move forward and do that next. That was kinda based upon the, the fire marshal, the fire chief, as well as, I think, the, uh, dispatch center itself. At one point, it was recommending some adjustments and changes to our systems.
Is that, was that negotiated for, uh, what period of time?
I believe that's a five-year agreement.
Five-year?
Which, which piece? The Milltown piece or the other?
The service contract under the emergency dispatch.
It may be three and a half, Fred, I, is it three and a half, Chief?
I mean, three and a half, I would say.
I think it's three and, no, five years, and I think it's three and a half every year.
Oh.
I, I believe.
Yeah, that may, that sounds, I think that sounds right.
But the agreement for the license, for the alarms is a, is something that we were, as Tom just explained, we're waiting till the telephone system is in place to make that change. We have not implemented that yet, but that is the point. Cause many of the alarms are not getting heard at the dispatch. And then they get an error message, and then we have to send our IT person over there, and we have to pay him to go over there, it's time and so forth, so, and it's costly. So what we're looking to do is hire a service that will be monitoring our alarms. So, that's what's in there. The dispatch cost is a hundred and four thousand. For the rest is associated with alarm monitoring. Anything on page fifty-one?
I was just looking at the overtime account, that's a ten percent increase. Good job. How about three percent? Could you go with three percent?
Uh, the reason why that's increased is, I'm expecting officers to retire. Should the number of officers indicated they're going to retire, that might be enough to cover their shifts.
But your payroll account hasn't decreased to indicate that you're retiring, so...
To fill their shifts, I thought, I thought about the...
The regular payroll, the regular payroll does not decrease, well, five hundred dollars. From current year to next year.
Yeah, 'cause I believe, I believe last year a raise was put in, but our union is in the process of negotiating a zero. I believe last year...
So that's not settled yet?
No.
Well, I mean, I think you've got the salary there to replace the retiring officers.
The problem is, you don't get them on right away, by pay.
So you'll save money there. I mean, we could, we could leave the overtime account, but then we'd have to lower the, the regular payroll account.
See what he's saying?
You're getting paid for both now?
I need the money.
You're getting both now?
Yeah, I need to cover the shift, so whatever way you decide you're gonna do it, I still need the money to cover your shifts.
I understand, but, but what I'm suggesting is, payroll account does not indicate that there's anybody retiring. So it doesn't show a reduction for fewer officers. And I know there's gonna be a time period when, I mean, hopefully not. Hopefully you can plan so that that doesn't happen, but in all likelihood, you'll be down a man per portion of the time.
Quite, especially if somebody goes into the academy.
Okay, so...
You're down six months.
So...
And you're covering that shift on overtime.
So maybe we should re, uh, reduce the payroll account by fifty thousand if you want to add an overtime one.
Do you understand what Mark's point is?
Our part is we're not guaranteed that people leave.
That's what I was just gonna say.
But...
I can't hear. I don't have a deafening, all I got...
So they would say, someone would say, you got your cake and you wanna eat it, too, but I would say, what good is the cake if you can't eat it?
On that number, I'm not even, I'm still that officer working along. Even with, right now, there's shifts that are two men on a shift.
On the retirees, uh, that folks retired, are there, uh, the pool of people retire from other departments? Are you finding more applicants coming in that way than from the, going right through the, the academy?
Uh, I'll be honest with you, we didn't get a big turn of first certified officers this time around. There were only two certified officers left in the pool. And we're, you know, still that new major, uh, testing procedures left that could probably open them up. We did not get a big turnover, and our reasoning was, we were told that our pay is three thousand.
Really?
Compared to other off, uh, other towns, the pay that we're paying in this county is a lot lower than what they can go to another town. Whether it is or it isn't, I'm not debating that, which I'm not here to debate that.
But that's...
Just telling what I was told by, some officers who put in for it and then withdrew their name, once they looked at the contract and found out.
Yes, I'm gonna suggest that in a million and a quarter dollar budget, that between you and Tom and Susan, you can find five thousand dollars. I don't care where it comes from. Anybody else have a problem in that community? That's nothing.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
Cause if you're, if you're gonna have an empty spot there, then you're gonna save a heck of a lot more than that. So, I, I think it's nothing.
Is there consensus on that? Carl? Ryan?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know, this was, I looked at the number, this hadn't been on my radar before. Um, I, you know, I looked at the, it was a slight decrease for the year. Um, I thought it looked good, but, you know, I'll support that, you know? It makes sense, just, it's tough when you can't predict, you know? You don't know if somebody's gonna leave and when they're gonna leave, so, I don't know. That, that's what makes it tricky, but five thousand, I feel like, is definitely manageable.
The other reason why we left that, just so you know, uh, why we left the regular payroll up, was because at one point, we had the termination calculation, because they get paid certain things when they get paid out. We had that in the benefits section. And then we were like, oh geez, maybe we shouldn't put it there, what, what we'll do is we'll leave it in payroll, and then hopefully, between payroll, overtime, and the benefits that we did budget for, it'll kinda wash itself out. So it was, it was one time in benefits, but it's kinda not there as much as it used to be. So now it's here, uh, in, now, that's why, that's what, that's, that was one of the reasons why when people were leaving, there's that, like, sick time accrual that they're allowed, and that can be a pretty decent number. Um, so that was why that, 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 where that would normally get put in the benefits budget, but we didn't do necessarily that, you know what I mean? We didn't...
Yeah, but why, why not?
Because we, you don't know, are the guys gonna leave or not gonna leave, so we kinda, kinda, I guess in theory gambled they weren't leaving. So we leave it here, and we leave it in OT, and then...
The other thing that we'll do is, we'll come back to you if we know September, we'll have an idea as to how your budget's going, Ron, and you can come back and let this, do an update with the selectmen, and let them know. That's what I would suggest.
Five thousand dollars out of a million and a quarter, I think, is not a big deal.
One area, one area is the, the electricity was...
Yes.
It went up nineteen point six percent, so, and that was the highest, I think, that I saw out of all the departments, was electricity. So you might be able to save a little there, you know, so...
Knock that down, look that down to sixteen thousand, electricity.
Good.
Thank you. Emergency management, I don't think there's too many changes here. Cell phones, that's not just for them, that's for the police, myself. Does the fire department go in there, too?
Emergency management is just, I don't know, emergency management is you and a big guy. Only those two people.
I don't think there's much in this particular fund. I don't know that we always use the emergency food fund, but there's not too much there, that's the event, so they... Disaster, we need to buy food.
I was thinking, I did the building department, what was the, um, part-time payroll?
That's the one that follows it.
Yeah.
But that's distributed among the different departments. That's distributed some in here, and then there'll be some that you'll see in land use, planning department. Is there some in zoning, I think?
I think it's, uh, I think it's building and planning.
If you left it in one department, it would increase in just a few hours. And if you eliminate it in the other departments, that would break it down. I think she works, how many hours? Is it nineteen? A week?
Twenty, maybe, nineteen, twenty, twenty, maybe?
And if you added five hours a week, or six hours a week, I think there was thirty put in.
Correct.
So we could reduce that to no more increase in hours, or some... I think if you added six hours, that would probably be a big help.
How many hours?
So sixty percent of the increase?
Right, so Tom will have to calculate that.
So you gotta remember, you skipped the blighting tune out, right? Which I feel like would, I'm hoping would take up some time, you know? I hope that adds up for extra hours.
Yes, and I will say that the, the person in that office does a very good job in coordination, keeping them organized. He's a big asset to the department. But I feel you don't wanna increase it to the thirty hours.
Take sixty percent of the increase, that's okay.
So you're gonna reduce it by four?
Reduce the increase by...
Reduce it.
That'll be the same thing on seventy-three. Susan?
Yeah. Page fifty-six and page seventy-five. Excuse me, fifty-five.
I'm up to sixty-one?
I had, I did have on, uh, fifty-nine, just, um, I looked at the, the tree removal. I mean, we've had a lot of storms last few years, and, uh, I'm just starting to wonder how many more trees we got left to, uh, you know, lop, lop. I mean, I know that... I mean...
Lightning drive home, this time, last year. Uh, but your, your points were, we are, we, your point is, we made progress, we made fantastic, so, you know, practically, look, now, what, what's done left, right, and request that. We probably should, you folks wanted to increase that, so if you plant some trees, sort of, we could do some stump. Well, that's where that point came from. Practically, I, I think this year I would spend approximately eleven thousand on tree cutting. The remainder of that money was spent perfectly for use of plant. That's a beautiful, I, I practically, for tree cutting, I would recommend a lot of money, Tom, it'd be a lot of money.
So there's some, there's some room to play, then, what do you guys think?
So you recommend, you have a recommendation to reduce that, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I mean, could we reduce it just twenty-five hundred, would help, make it even twenty thousand? You'd rather leave it?
That would allow you, uh, to continue, or if the selectmen direct the tree plant, some tree planting?
Like I say, I can get by with likely eleven thousand dollars for tree removal, the rest is up to you.
And that still leaves nine for other things.
Yeah, I, I think, as I look around, I, I'll, I'll agree to that, but as I look around the town, I think there are still a lot of, a lot of trees that need a lot of work, so, uh, I don't think we oughta, we should cut that too severely.
That's, yeah.
And I think we agree on the planting side of it, but I, yeah, when you, all right.
You just trim it?
Trim that, yeah.
Right, so that line item, thirty-six-oh-oh-four, reduced by twenty-five hundred. Anything else on that page?
No, that was it for me.
Just on that, to jump back to that, we're just to point out the road materials that, that we had a brief discussion the other day, and I think that, um, probably will continue, because I, as I, I'd indicated at that meeting, you know, at least I'm willing to look at, at, um, some materials that are, uh, less harmful to the lawns and to the environment.
That would not be material, I don't think, Fred, that you talked, road materials we were talking about, sand, it was something?
Yeah.
That's the old thirty eighty.
Okay.
This is, this, this road material of how we be working chips, we also discussed. Uh, and should you want, as those are a different system or method, we would increase that about significantly. IAX is around a hundred thousand dollars, and I'll, 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 with that, seventy, or you'll get by, we'll change how we do our locations, which is, okay, we have to do that.
Yeah, that's a five point oh-seven percent increase, so, I wonder if we couldn't reduce that by five thousand also?
If I could on this one. At the time I prepared my recommendations, Tom, when we discussed it, I was not optimistic that we would be replacing the, the number of vehicles on the list. I wasn't aware that we were gonna be fortunate to hopefully replace them.
Haven't gotten there yet, Mike.
I know, so I, I'm kind of questioning, whatever you choose to do, but it's again, if you were going to replace, then you probably could reduce your repair costs, so... If you're not gonna replace it, you probably oughta increase that. So if you're going to, uh, your lease of, of the vehicles that we discussed, I would say you most likely could, no, I'll tell you where we're at. When, when I prepared that, my recommendations in January, we had used up sixty-four percent of that. So that's what we could suggest, Tom, that we increase that by ten thousand dollars. A lot of that money is spent repairing the holders. I would say, if you're going to stay with your lease, uh, the way it is, you probably would reduce that by at least five. I'm guessing if we were, if I were that, maybe, that would be a lot.
I think three, if we rounded it to three percent, I think it's about, um, six. You, you okay with that? If it's the total, and you can work out with Rick Howard's, to buy six thousand for the page?
Yeah.
Would there come out of that?
Forty-four, oh, oh, three? Sure.
So you're saying we'd increase it only by three percent, and then you'll figure out the rest, where it comes from? That's, yeah, that's six.
Tommy, I wanted to give you a number.
For which one?
Page sixty-one.
Yeah, I went with a hundred and nineteen thousand, so it went down six thousand.
Four-four-oh-oh-three repairs, it'll be a hundred and nineteen, not one twenty-five.
Well... Okay, I, I was suggesting we increase the total vehicle maintenance by eight thousand. So that would be, it's a reduction of almost six, not quite six.
Yeah, fifty-five hundred, yeah.
Four hundred.
Fifty-five hundred. You go to six, okay. So Tom will reduce that higher page, the whole account by six thousand.
Now, the town engineer account is a function of development, obviously, and that's why we see an increase there. We know that there's been more site plan reviews this year, anticipate that continuing. We know that there's been more site plan reviews this year, anticipate that continuing.
You went on page seven, P and Z hearings.
Page seven?
Yeah, I'm looking at that, we could go up to eighty-five hundred in that number. And that's kind of a direct relationship to this issue. So that would bring that revenue number up and then kind of showing why that's going up too.
Can you guys explain the street lighting and how we're going to save money on that?
Well, there's a couple of things. One way we'll look at anything that we think is really unnecessary and have those removed. The other thing is I'm looking at how the town could go about actually purchasing the streetlights. And there are programs out there that many towns have saved quite a bit of money just by converting the way they pay for those streetlights. So we're going to be looking into that very seriously. We'll bring that to you, for your consideration, but they could save quite a bit of money. CCM has a program, and then I think the city of Middletown has another program that we're going to.
It's just with the cost of electricity, you know, rising across the rest of the budget, you know, having this go down by almost three percent, just seem, it seemed funny, you know, looking at it. So I just, you know, are there, you think enough lights that you can find?
I think from the method of how we pay for it, more, more so.
More so than, yeah.
I think so, right.
There are still lights. I think there's, there's lights out there that are.
You can buy a light for $100.
I can buy a light.
But we will be working on that, we'll bring it back to you.
We did this about eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, eight years ago, I think. And we went through all the lights that we had in town and took out what was not needed by safety and zoning and all the other requirements. And it was like four hundred lights, quite a few lights that could be eliminated.
We had almost one hundred people on the.
Yeah, no, that's why I mentioned it, because I remember it was a very hot budget.
So this isn't by only turning off lights, this is by changing the way.
The whole, the whole way we like it.
The villain, I think we can say quite a bit. Middletown has saved a tremendous amount from the papers, you may have read about that. So we're going to try to mimic what they've already done. Do you want to take a brief break for just a couple of minutes? Noah, we'll just shut off for a minute. We're up to page sixty.
Six?
Yes, sixty-six, sixty-seven, ground. Fuel cost is a real cost, the increase here, the ground supplies.
I'm up to seventy-three.
Seventy-three?
I don't know if anybody has anything before that.
Well, to Fred's point, page seventy-one, if you're going to do anything with road materials in terms of sand, salt, and so forth, that, that page. You know, they wanted to add a little bit there. I know we're over that budget this year.
I was going to ask.
Yeah, you're over that.
Oh, we're forty thousand over in overtime?
Yeah.
Forty thousand?
Over.
So the budget was forty, forty-six, five, you're like eighty-six, five?
Right now, we're about, yeah, as of, when I read this report, which was March twenty-sixth, it were, we were eighty-seven, six, one, two. And then road materials were expensive, twenty-five thousand with encumbrance of fourteen.
So.
We're budgeted by thirty-four.
This, this year we had frequency and last year we had. So what makes us think it's going to get better next year?
If you look at the trend, if you look back, and I've done it now, it's been years, and kind of hold that line, tell me if you live. For example, two thousand eleven, twelve, we spent thirty, two thousand twelve, thirteen, we spent seven, six, when we were back, you know. So it's, it's all in nature. You know, what I'm trying to do is kind of look in the past and kind of hold, or hold what happened. I don't want to, I don't want to hold or chew, it, it, it is out, honestly, over.
So you're okay with the forty-six?
Yeah, you can tell me, tell me this not wrong, I mean, I, I. I don't mean, I don't mean any disrespect, I, I mean, what I'm trying to say to you is, it could be thirty again if we get a mild winter, or it could be eight if you have a bad.
Well, it's a year for the same amount that you had this year, and I'm, I'm asking if that's enough. And you think it is.
I'm saying to you.
Just don't say.
Go, I mean, you know, it's like what you're trying to predict revenues, and you, I mean, it's, it's kind of that, yeah, it's all in nature. So I mean, if you want to hold it to fifty, go ahead, maybe I'll come in, one of them, maybe I'll.
If you, if you take eighty-six, five, which is what we're at this year, and then you just average it out over the actual expended for the other two years, over three years, you get, you still get sixty-four thousand averaged over three years. I'm just saying, like, it's tough.
It's a good, that number is going to be.
It's a guess.
Whatever it's going to be, because you know you're not going to tell me, don't go, not fucking.
Yeah.
You know, I'm giving you my best guess, maybe you want to hold, you know, better safe than sorry.
So that number is your number, that forty-six?
Forty-one.
However, you'll see under the fiscal notes, untreated salt and or cleaner sand are requested, then additional funds would be needed in the road materials. And that was what some of the discussion was during the workshop.
And I'm not looking to add money to the budget, but I don't think we should be realistic.
I'm happy where we are. Like, like he says, you know, your average is out year after year, you're putting your number in and see where it goes.
What about using cleaner materials?
I think you have to, either in the experimental area in the town, or looking at using a cleaner sand to augment what we already have.
The middle had a mic.
I'll, I'll move to the five thousand into the company.
Is that like your number, it's more like fifteen to twenty?
Five thousand, five, about, I mean, I don't know what does five.
Yesterday morning?
If you're going to try to make us, and whatever you choose to do, I'm very fine. If you're going to make any substantive change, you're looking at hundreds of that, I mean.
Yeah, but Rick, we talked about doing not the whole town, but maybe a sm- and I know you talk about putting in a wash station, and I know you talked about other things which you definitely be able to do. But we've got to address some of the problems.
You and I, you apparently had a discussion with Donald about trying to, it was treated salt on a group and then sand on another group, you never did talk, that doesn't work.
Well, I think I should be able to talk to the road foreman whenever I want.
Of course you can, I, I just.
He's our supervisor, he does an excellent job.
And we did go, I'll share with you as we talked, we went through a seminar, a UCA, road salt is a big, big thing right now. Corrosivity and environmental, and it's huge, and it's most of the town's problem. So we went out and I said to Donald, I said, you have a discussion about, anyways, in the long haul, whatever you choose to do, I'll work with you. I, I'm just trying to say to you, this is not the time to, to make what you change. Let's see how it shakes out with the availability of treated salt, environmental issues that are coming forward, the cost of treated salt, which is going to go, I don't know where. I mean, I would strongly recommend for this coming season, stay in horse.
All right.
I still made, I made a motion for five thousand dollars.
That I got so many complaints about our roads this year, not the condition of the roads, but the amount of dirt. And I was told, if you don't do something about this, we're going to be very, very upset. Now, the one thing that we did do is we did get some, some cleaner sand. But in the beginning of the winter, the roads were dirty, dirty, dirty. And if we can do something by making some changes, I think we need to do that.
Did you even put it in here?
No, I didn't, but I wrote it over here.
Rick, was, was that our stand or our?
What happened this year?
We spent less than materials this year than the forty-six thousand.
What happened to us this year?
Twenty.
We're in a, we're in a limbo kind of state where we're trying to get our approval on sand salt shed from the people, which we have not got. So what I did is I used up, if we're going to, we're going to have to, I used up. Which I sent there for probably thirty, in other words, I, I need to use, I didn't want to waste. So we got some dirtier stuff in the beginning.
Because it's older, a lot of fines, so forth.
It's old, it's fine, we've got all kinds of stuff, but, but I don't want to be wasteful, so I.
Used it, good.
You know, you got a lot of money this year, so we used it. And I had, and I get probably, I get all kinds of complaints too.
Next year, not seeing, using that same dirty salt.
Well, next year we'll, we'll screen again, like this was a very, and all the time I've been here, we've only screened fresh sand. And it's not the best because I'm limited in where I can get it. I have some very disgusting, I can't get it. You could purchase, and I purchased twenty thousand dollars worth of Butler's sand, which wasn't dirty, but it's very dusty, it loads all over. It's nice, nice stuff, but it's, you can't ever take.
So when you say dirty, what, what are you talking about? That there's, that there are rocks in there? What, what are the, what are the, what's the nature of the complaint?
Well, they're muddy, brown, dark brown, it's a color.
That's, it's just that it's dirty, truly, like, what that word means?
This is a problem this year, which is another one now, we probably used twice what I normally used because we were out there all the time. So it's not only one.
They say instead of getting pure sand, you're getting a little topsoil, a little muddy, mixed in into your thing. Actually, I kind of like that because.
Digging up thirty-year-olds though.
I, I like the dirtier sand because I, I believe that's like being darker, I think you get any of the sun.
No, it's not, it's not darker sand, it was slimy.
It's the mud and, and the fines of the topsoil and the sand.
I'm not a geologist, I don't know.
But isn't the nature of some of these complaints that there's a lot of.
Is there a suggestion?
Sand and, and, and our rocks and people's yards.
I had a motion for five.
In addition, that's another issue.
I agree.
Okay, that's two, Kathy, three, there's four there.
We have consensus on adding five thousand to road materials. And to continuing the discussion.
No, I just, real quick though, Rick, you said this year, you're not over budget on the materials, even, even though we've used twice as much as normally.
That's correct, that's because last year, at the end of the season, we had a pretty bad storm, so we purchased additional salt. And I started with a full twelve.
I want to see it.
I said a full, a top one, let's pull up.
Five thousand is good? Yeah, five, five thousand.
Well, the good news is it wasn't.
Can you drive a truck?
Yes, yes. Additional sharing to road. We're moving on.
Seventy-three?
Seventy-three.
I, I don't think we can afford to increase the plan consultant. I can't afford a consultant to do my work. I don't think the taxpayers can increase it.
Discussion?
So you want to take it off the ten?
Leave it at six.
Leave it at six, I'd be okay with that.
Was that the plan of conservation and development, is that what it is?
They wanted forty to fifty thousand. Over two years.
I'd like to hire consultants.
It's a good business to, to post consultants.
Yes, certainly is.
How does that interact with our state mandate to do something about it?
Well, you have to update your plan every ten years. You have to update your plan every ten, you have to figure out how to do it.
We'll have to do it ourselves. And they still have six thousand dollars to work with.
The planning and zoning commission will, it's during the outbreak, that's okay.
Well, you're not doing it, we are.
You'll come with me to their meeting, that would be helpful. Okay, what do you want to do, folks?
Take off the four.
Well, while you're agreeing with it, I don't agree with it, but we'll do what the boards, it looks like there's consensus, I'm not voting. They'll be back to you, they'll be back. As I said, there's consensus, so Sharon, did you get that? Three one oh oh. I need to know what consensus is on. Three one oh oh two on page seventy-three. What is it? You don't have a budget, do you?
It's the planning department.
Okay, page seventy-three. Plan consultant. Deduct four thousand. Deduct what? Four thousand dollars from the proposed.
If it's that important, have them come tomorrow night and tell us why, you know?
Well, they work here. And it's more, it's more the planning and zoning commission, not talking about the planning and zoning commission. Next page, seventy-five.
That, again, though, you're also, you also hit in that number, one one oh three. On that page, on page seventy-three, you hit that by forty percent.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't know if they already did.
Wait, say that again?
One one oh three is going down by forty percent too.
We did, we already increased it, from the thirteen six? Oh, we did, yeah. Oh, page ninety-three, are we there yet? Did somebody have anything before that? What's, I just was wondering what the Rushford Center was for five hundred? That is.
You don't know what the. That's a good thing that you don't know that.
Actually, I don't know what that is.
It's a center for drug and alcohol rehabilitation.
Oh, okay. And then the, the family access, middle sex behavior?
American for drug and alcohol, cooperative.
I just didn't know what they were, you know, that's all.
The Portland Fair requested more money.
I'd like to help them if we can, but I don't know, what's, what's your thoughts?
The rest of the board?
When, if we leave that alone, do nothing, is there, will be another window to do something? Other requests, do you think Susan, or what's your, what's your take on that?
You mean, if you don't put it in the budget?
Right.
Can you revisit it at another time, if you have dollars available? Of course, you can at any time.
That would be my.
Yeah, I agree, that sounds good to me.
If you have a good July, August, September, and feel there's an interest, because I know the fireworks would like additional money, I'm sure that Brownstone Forum would like more money. more money, and there's a lot of different groups in here, and depending on their needs, they'll, yeah, spring back and, and adjust those needs.
Is the parade being funded this year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Five thousand. Five thousand dollars for the parade.
What's that for, like, police, is that what that is, like, the road closure?
Some, and then quite a bit of it goes to the Shriners for the parade.
I don't have, Rick.
That's where most of it is, a little bit of.
Nothing goes to police.
Uh, it's not the police?
I paid for that out of my pocket.
Shriners, it's the Shriners, it's, uh, like Hershey's, uh, candy and food, uh, there's some other, you know, miscellaneous, the, the group that submits bills and payments, review those and pay the bills. That's more operational costs of the fair, of the, of the, whatever parade.
If anyone needs any water, the light, library provided us.
What, how'd you guys know?
I'm up to the library.
Me too. The only thing I saw was eighty-five hundred dollars of an increase for books struck me as a little much. Um, it's kind of a big jump.
You've been trying to make up for other years that, that account was reduced, that's why that went up.
Just the percentage-wise, let me just, I think I had written it down.
Jan, did you wanna comment?
So, yeah, it's a twenty-four percent increase since last year.
Yeah. We have not had, uh, much of an increase, if we were back, uh, two years, uh, and it's been cut, it's actually got forty-four thousand, not so many of them back, um, paid, or before that, and now we, as well as the folks who are paying for it, the last one, we, you know, we've got several ebooks in mind, on the top of it, and something like that.
Okay, so the contractual services, that, that doesn't have anything to do with the ebooks, or, 'cause I noticed how, like, I was thinking, well, maybe your online databases go up, but then maybe you save money on the backend, you know, you don't need as many books, um, is it?
No, basically, the data bases are generally separate, sometimes you borrow off a building, we have a manager, like, also, definitely what's killing me is the friends that make some of the books, but really, we're finding, um, demands for things, we're looking into a language database, and online courses, that we hope to do, so, the data bases, uh, production, that's outside of the, of the.
The periodicals, um, I don't know, I feel like are, are, some magazines have gone out of print, or, you know, have we lost any, you know, that we did have subscriptions for, or?
We lost a few, gained a few, um, like, prices go up, it hasn't changed much, it hasn't changed.
Yeah, no, I know, I just.
And I looked at it, you know, we just started to renew, um, about the same, I expect something might go out, like, we get a credit or something for, for print, that helps.
But that also covers some of the records.
It's just, I was thinking maybe just for, you know, I mean, I'm all for an increase, but.
Bring it up to forty thousand.
Exactly, yeah. I think it's fine as it is, it's a one, one point three percent increase. Yeah, but that includes savings on electricity that I don't, how are we gonna save that on, with the electricity when it's supposed to go up for all the other budgets, this one goes down, it, I thought that was weird.
Well, that's, it's, uh, because we, during last year, we were running an electrical system to run the heat.
Oh, so that was.
After the oil system broke.
Okay.
So that was, you know, so now we're, hopefully, the natural gas will hopefully save us as well as, and natural gas as well as electricity is our anticipation.
Well, you can, you know, just on the books, there's, uh, some various things too, uh, like, the town, like, the climate, or, if you didn't have a towed by, or, any study for public, and I, we've got one, trying to look up, with, with, trying to, um, you know, we hit our bounds, but it's just not presenting, we're probably keeping it positive, but, a lot of these new demands, you know, there's that, that's why you're really good using it, and, and, for the kids.
Brad, what do you want to?
I'll leave it alone myself, something one point three one, that's one.
Yeah.
Um, maybe if we leave, like, the discs and videos, that would be a thousand there, if we left that the same, possibly, 'cause if we look the past two, two years on that.
You mean, leave the discs and videos at six?
Excess, mhm.
What about books? Ryan suggested increasing it four thousand instead of eighty-five.
Still an eleven percent increase, I, I mean, I think that's reasonable.
Now, the videos, I would rather see the videos actually go up, Captain, than, than go down in that, we don't have a video store in town anymore right now, um, I mean, there's, it does, it does fill a need here in town, for the people.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
I'll go with Ryan's suggestion.
Yeah, let's see, books go down and videos go up, Frank, that was no doubt.
I would leave it alone.
I vote to leave it alone. What do we got? Three of us leaving alone?
Thank Kathy for the swing.
Yeah, I'm gonna say leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
At the one point three one overall.
Cause there'll be years when you gotta cut it.
Mhm, and we have done that.
Yes, we have.
And we will again.
I think, uh, we'll move on to employee fringe benefits.
Did I change any, Tom, or did you change this remit? Probably not substantially. Definitely not substantially.
Well, Tom, maybe.
Maybe they'll, like, take ten thousand on a medical.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you have another forty, read it.
Eighty-five hundred, was it eighty-five hundred or ten, ten?
Ten.
Yeah, ten over.
Tom, do you have the new, um, contract rate for the medical insurance?
Yeah, we have ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten point four. You probably could do, maybe, uh, maybe you do a thousand in fight of Medicare.
Okay.
You know much more there?
And the pension contributions are the amount that were, uh, recommended, right?
Not recommended, plus five percent of the other people's.
Okay.
Yeah. Maybe why, as I pull that other person out of the full, the full-time status, I could pull her contribution out, but it's gonna be very small, so. Probably not recommend that.
Risk management, um, this is a required increase, um, that, you know.
It's actually below the required increase, required increase is six percent, I took a little bit out of the self-insurance, it's in the number, so.
Because of all the damage that had occurred, the piece card totaled, water damage at Brownstone School, so, we went from Portland High School, and water damage at Bellevue, so, you know, the insurance company came up with a three-year, seven percent each year, Tom, or six, six?
Six percent each year.
Six percent over three years, and this will be year three? Coming up?
I think this is the third year.
Had good, um, I think it's, I think this, this budget cap, I think that's the last year.
Yep.
Six percent, third year. Okay, debt service? I think, based on your request for adding the police variable speed sign, you need to, to put some increases here.
Can we get a price of it?
Yes, Tom has a price.
Yeah, nine thousand-ish.
And could we lease that, is that something we could do?
We think so.
I don't think I have a present for that one either.
But, wanted to buy one of those various speed signs, to, you know, the amount, you know, the speed that you're going, like, when you're going in the thirty-five mile an hour zone, you're going thirty-three miles.
You know the rights, you always make flash, Brian, when you're done.
Yeah, try to get the high score.
I think you had to leave early, if you have this one.
Do we get a price on a fixed one, I just was wondering what the difference would be in price.
No, we did, uh, we were, we did the roll, we just did the roll.
We got the real real price on the roll. The company is, uh, working extremely hard, you know, with the, with the, with the.
Yeah, it's a lot lower than what we talked about.
Yes, I thought it was gonna be double that.
Sorry about that number.
They la, how long would they last for?
The company, uh, for going, if it is approved, um, under market request, was, um, customs adults, um, you're, like, number one company, uh, radar equipment, and, uh, talking to a lot of places, we use them, you know, we discuss them, because of durability, just like, you know, they'll last about ten years, or they, uh, you guys serious, you hear?
It's good investment, a thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Although, where, where's your plan, where are we planning?
It'll have them on.
It'll have them.
Nobody even obeys his top sign here, I don't know.
And then. We're gonna get a trailer, so you can move it around.
Well, I guess my, my question is, so it's gonna be in certain places, the people are gonna see it sitting there for six months, and I just kinda wonder what the effect?
What, Lieutenant Boulard wants one?
Are there, are there studies as to how effective this is?
Uh, I had to do it, it's no such thing, uh, what, what we used to do is take it, uh, he, you know, he used to have a machine that we would, well, they would notice, uh, you need to take it and you move it, with it, you know, even in the hairy couple weeks, we would, we would take it on the police, and really, what it's just doing, is not doing anything as far as taking the person, it's just awareness, the person who goes by, the light starts flashing, clicks in your head, you know, that you need to slow down, it's not gonna get you, you know, other than education.
I guess my thought process, maybe I'm the minority, well, it's a small town, you're gonna put it in certain spots, people are gonna know it's there, I think everybody knows when they're speeding, I don't know that it really has that much of an effect, you're gonna, you're gonna see it sitting there, you're gonna drive by it every day.
But you can move it with this trailer, right? So you're gonna move it.
That's the reason why I think we went with the trailer, uh, because it will move to different areas, right now, what we do, we get a lot of calls from the general public wanting radar run on their streets. I can't, it's impossible, and eleven guys, who are we, putting a guy out there every single day, running radar, so what this does, is education people as they go by, you know, you might put an area that we're getting a lot of phone calls, you're not gonna slow it, you're putting down, you might even get somebody going through there faster to try to get the sign to flash, we're not gonna sit here and tell you, it's a hundred percent cool, but it does educate the public, and it does, you know, school people, people sort of, you know.
And when we had that one down near Gildersleep School for a little bit, it slowed me down, like, all the time.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's, I do think it's effective.
It's a mental thing.
I really do.
I just think it tells, like, the people that maybe they're not taking, but one, you know a cop put it there, so you know there's gotta be, you know, somebody around the area, and another thing is, like, oh, this, this town cares about their speed, you know, they care about the, uh, safety, you know, like, when you don't see it, it's easy to forget how fast you're going, it's easy. I think the only thing that works is penalties, you take the people, you do that, I don't know.
I think it's, uh, mentality of it all, I think it's more of, uh, how people see, you know, how others drive, how they can drive, there's a lot more psychology to it.
After the machine's up for a week, then.
Well, that's my point, if it's up for a week and you're going home, you drive by it every day, you're, you're not gonna, it's not gonna have any effect.
Want to take another recess, or?
Your pleasure.
Sure. Yeah.
Five days.
No, I'm just.
We're, we're.
Do you wanna say anything, Rich, or you're just enjoying the?
Soaking it all in.
Soaking it all in.
Yeah.
Just in case we need, good, glad you're here. So I think what we're gonna do, folks, is we're going, we're going to come back tomorrow.
Is the sign in?
Yes.
The sign's in?
Sign is in.
Oh, yes.
And I, I could be opening up myself, but I don't know what, what I can tell the people, but I respectfully request that maybe you turn the thing on, whatever I am on, 'cause I've been sitting here, doing this for two hours, and, we could, I mean, I could, my.
But what if they come back tomorrow and we get it again?
I know, then I'll be here tomorrow, so.
Did anyone, all right, did anyone have any comments of youth services?
All right, what page?
Now, what's that page again, Mary?
It's like one thirty? One twenty-four, one twenty-five, one twenty-six.
That could be a problem. Well, this budget is decreased by thirty percent.
Yeah.
I saved everybody else. We appreciate your hard work.
Ryan should give you a ride home.
I'm gonna check those seats, make sure they're not damp or anything on them.
So let this lucky take a minute, maybe, any other departments want us to look at their, we did look, we did, we just passed over the fire. We'll do casuals, right?
Unless there's any colors running on there, that's what the assessor's here for, if you, you need a discussion on the valuation number. I don't think there's.
Please, the fire department.
This is going by at the border, right? I respect, uh, youth services, I said, I respect, uh, I don't know.
Mary, I heard no problem.
No problem.
Was there anything?
Do you wanna come back tomorrow?
While we have our directors here, is there anything you had questions about in terms of the lease, because there's the fire department, the assessor, public works, and police, and they all have pieces of capital, not necessarily the lease, but Rich is here because we put some money in for the evaluation, so, if there were any concerns or questions on those matters at this point?
I had one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Lee, I, I understand, I know, um, when we talked about the fire truck, how we said there'd probably be a bid waiver, and, um, that's understandable, you know, um, but I just wanna make sure that everything else goes out to bid, you know, that's on there, I really would like to make sure that we get the best deals we can, I mean, I understand, like, safety comes first, you know, but, uh, aside from that.
The truck, we have two different, uh, buildings right now, so you have two prices. We have one, at current budget, represents, there's another building, we're still on the run, where we decide to go, um, depends on that, but that's a little, uh, because we're getting a little lower, it's gonna be difficult, because, you know, we want to bring down that number. We have two, we haven't done that in the past, but I thought that was necessary, because it just actually interrupts on the design, to make sure there are true to the answers that you're, you're saying.
Okay.
And I'll add one, that our equipment, from the coast, that comes from state.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, and I, I think I re- Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, and I, I think I remember, I remember hearing that, I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
The radar equipment will probably utilize GSA, which often we don't use for other components, but for public safety, they are, and that's, this vendor's on the GSA bid. It's supposed to have a little bit better of a quality, than maybe some of the that are on the state contract. Not to say that the ones on the state contract aren't good vendors for the public safety, but just, they, this one may have a little bit specialized body, uh, that's, uh, maybe longer lasting, that we've heard from. That was my question.
Grounds, too, is the same thing, that goes off state bid. All right, we'll work on those numbers, and I can let you know.
You'll come back tomorrow? Any other comments from the second, or questions for the directors? We'll be back again tomorrow at seven o'clock, okay? Second by Kathy, own favor, any close, questions? Thank you all.